You ready back there?
Ready to go, all right. I'm gonna go ahead and call our organizational meeting to order. What we need to do on this is to elect a board chairman. I will accept fault in the last nomination. It was my fault. We had two nominations with seconds on the floor at the same time. And we proceeded and through Robert's rule of order, we needed to stop and do them one at a time. And so that is 100% my fault. And so we are having to do this again due to my mistake. So my apologies to the board. So I'll open nominations for election for chairman.
Tim Bobb.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those and any other? Oh, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We can't do any others. All right. Well, I'll close the nomination.
Don't do it wrong yet. We just have to do it again next time.
Vote, vote.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'll go ahead and close our organizational meeting. I'll go ahead and call the order, our regularly scheduled meeting. First item up is to approve the agenda. I do have two kind of deletions, I guess is what you could call that. Under financial report, if we could mark out August, we will be approving the July financial report. The second item that I need to remove is budget amendment number one. If we can remove that from our agenda with those two things.
And moving forward, Scott Ray and I had a conversation. He has to wait to get some information from the city before he can do financial reports for the school. And the timing of that with us meeting on, with them meeting on the fourth Monday, but then us meeting on the second Thursday, there's not a whole lot of the time crunch there. So we're just gonna start so we're not continually deleting. We are going to start approving the financial reports, but they will be two months. They won't be for the previous month. It will be for the month prior. That way, we make sure that we're not having to take something off the agenda as often.
All right. Any other additions or deletions for the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray for the month of July.
Well, I've given everybody the July financial report, which is one that you're used to seeing. It's a summary financial statement at the top. In July, you can see there's not really much going on in July financially. Revenues have not started to come in, which is your property tax. Sales tax does come in, but remember our cash flow from sales tax for July, August, and September has already been recognized as revenue in the prior year. So we accrue that as of June 30th, 2022. So from a cloud, this is a purely cash flow summary financial statement. The other big item is BEP. We don't get any BEP in July. It's an off month. We get our BEP over 10 months. So given that in relation, and you can see our expenditures, if you look at 71-100 regular ed program, it's $79,000. Our first month of teacher payroll fits in August. So we don't have a huge amount of expenditures, which is great because we, our cash flow coming in is not so great. It evens out. I have given everybody a balance sheet. And every so often, I'd like to do that because I think it's overlooked. The balance sheet is a snapshot in time, but it tells you where you're capable of going. The financial summary tells you where you've been. The balance sheet tells you where you're at and where you're capable of going. So at the top of that, you can see cash in the bank, 1.3 million. Some cash equivalents, that is another bank account we have, where we have our debit cards with Knoxville Teachers Federal Credit Union. Cash with the boards, agencies, and commissions, that's the retention account for the South Clinton addition. Every time they ask for payment, we withhold 5% as retention. And then investments, that's money that the city is, I think investments is too strong. We're putting in a cash interest-bearing account. They're heavily restricted on what we can do with our excess funds by the comptroller. So all in all, we've, you know, got over $5 million in cash. If you go down to the bottom of the financial statement, your total equities, you're a little, you're over $5 million. In the middle is our liability, are our liabilities. Accounts payable is standard. There's nothing on this balance sheet that looks out of line that I'm concerned about. Our cash and our investments, which is close to cash, are gonna carry us through for the next 90 days of cash flow. So if we did experience a hiccup with BEP or sales tax, property tax, we're in a good position. So you should feel comfortable on where you're at as a board financially. Also, in your final summary financial statement, you have the federal programs, which is the third page. We have zero revenue. Remember, that's a reimbursement grant. We spend it. We spent $40,000, $44,000 this year, well, as of in July. We request that reimbursement in the middle of August, and we'll more likely get it in the middle of September. So there's a lag on that. Cafeteria fund, food services, no revenue in July. We didn't serve any meals. Some expenditures for equipment maintenance. But remember, we do have a pretty healthy balance in the school nutrition program to carry us through any tough times. Any questions on the income statement or the balance sheet? I know I gave you a lot, but it's kind of a lot to feel good about.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our July financial report as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Leggett, 21.
Yes.
Lori Russell.
Yes.
Kim Apple.
Yes.
Merle Frye.
Yes.
Joey Sneak.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we need to elect our delegate assembly. Kelly, is that two representatives for the, for the school system that we elect? Or do we do two plus an alternate, correct? Okay. So who would like to be one of our delegates?
Did we do it last year because of COVID that we had?
I was supposed to do it last year, but I didn't get to go.
Somebody.
KK.
I think KK did it.
KK was our reserve.
She needs to do it. But Lori.
I don't know what it is.
Yo, it's nothing bad.
It's where TSBA comes up with their legislative agenda and what they wish to pursue. And when the school systems vote on how they want them to proceed.
You just click yes. You have a little clicker, and if you agree that you want that to be a part of their agenda, you say yes. And if you don't, you say no.
That's where they send out the little packets, and you can get with Scott and Kelly, and they can tell you what benefits a small city school system. And because some of the legislation actually hurts us that they would try and.
Yeah, of course, it's not bad, yes.
That's what it is.
All right, so we have a volunteer. Excellent. Wonderful. Joey?
So then it would really be fair for Joey to accompany her, don't you think?
Yeah, I think so. He'd be a good mentor on button pushing.
I don't know, understand that, but okay. You've done it before.
Yeah, I've done it. I'll do it.
All right. And Curtis, would you like to be a alternate?
Not really.
Since he didn't get to do it last year.
Would you like to be an alternate?
I'll do the alternate part.
All right, so.
I will volunteer to the.
All right.
You can see how beneficial this is that everybody wants to do it. Their consciencement that you do it.
When they're volunteering you to do it, you know.
It's nothing bad, I swear. It's nothing bad. Takes about an hour, and it's, it's nothing bad.
All right, so we have Lori and Joey as our delegates with Curtis, all right, with David as a alternate. I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we have our rooms that, with Aptogee, that we are going to add to our current contract, correct?
Correct. So Aptogee is our vendor that we, now that we are into our second year using them. But they host our website, and they also have created our Clinton City Schools app. And they have an additional add-on feature. And one of the things that we have really been concerned with in Clinton City Schools for the past several years is parents and public don't really go to websites anymore. They, they really have latched onto the app, and we hear lots of good positive feedback about the app. But they also, we just live in a world where we heavily rely on text messages. And up to this point, we do not have a method for our teachers to communicate district-wide on the same platform with parents via text. And so what this, what teachers have had to do is they've resorted to downloading things on their own phones, such as Remind 101 or some of those other apps that can communicate with parents in a quick way. But none of that is archived, and none of it is running through our system to add legal protection for our staff members who are communicating. And so what the rooms will do is it talks to our SIS system. It works through the Clinton City Schools app. And so what, if Jenna was a classroom teacher and she decided to change a homework assignment at the last minute because it appeared to be too difficult, she could go onto that. She could pull up her class, and she could say, I've canceled the homework for tonight. Please tell your students not to worry about it. We'll continue working on it. And then that is going to send, as long as the parent has pushed notifications enabled on that app, it will push that, and they will get the notification on their cell phone. And so what it doesn't do is it doesn't give the add-on of parents having a conversation and commenting about the message that she sends. But what parents would have the ability to do is to pop on the app and then send her an individual message asking clarification or seeking, or maybe even saying, thank you very much for canceling this homework assignment. And so they would have the ability to have a two-way conversation privately, but not in a group. But the beautiful thing and the reason we wanted to do it was, number one, it gives a consistent communication platform across all districts. But number two, it is archived and backed up to where if it were ever subpoenaed or if there were any questions, that we would have a backup that would provide some legal protection for the teachers. And so this is definitely recommended from a legal standpoint.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve contract with Aptogee.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
This sounds good.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to reports and information from the principals.
So no homework, Jenna, come on up.
No homework.
What other good news do you have for us today?
I don't know, but I would love to cancel all homework. So if I have access to that, I, don't tempt me, because you know how I feel about that.
You had access to grandparents today, and you went the opposite direction.
Listen, I'm excited about grandparents.
Yeah, I am too.
I'm gonna look for you, David Quainer.
I won't be there.
We'll see. Okay, so an update on our academics in PLCs. We began the year by setting norms and communicating our goal and vision for the year. And our goal for the year at Clinton Elementary is that teachers will deepen the understanding of standards by planning for using and reflecting on success criteria. So right now, the administration and the coaches are doing learning walks, and we are looking for different ways that they are using success criteria. We're looking at how the students learn, how they engage. And then we're taking that back to PLCs, and we're using actual student work. We're gonna be digging deeper into that to plan for their PD during PLCs. And then also, as part of our system goal, we're going to be doing standards mastery as a formative assessment. And we're gonna dig deep into that to improve our instruction also. We started the month today, well, our first PTCC meeting. I'll get it out. And I was so excited because we actually had eight to 10 parents there. And so we're trying to improve our parent participation. I've made a listserv of emails that parents, if they wanted to be a grandparent, and then I'm adding everyone that attends PTCC. I got some feedback today that they would like to see a virtual option also along with the in-person meeting. So, but they've been really kind of sending in, I sent out a signup genius, and they sent in a bunch of stuff for the teachers in the workroom. And then the next signup genius, they'll be sending in stuff for students. So just another way to get parents involved. We are having a fundraiser right now, and it is for, if you send in money, you can have your child's birthday advertised on our digital sign. We've heard from a lot of parents that they do not want a sales fundraiser, more of a donation. So that's one way that they can donate, and it's been successful so far. So I'm anxious to see how that goes. We've also been working with the Clinton Police Department to improve safety measures at school. Last Friday, we did some training on how to respond to a threat. And we've already ordered radios for the school. We went over the safety plan with the teachers yesterday, and we are having a safety team meeting on the 20th. Tomorrow is Grandparents' Day. It's gonna be a lot of fun. We, they've actually changed the menu to spaghetti. I wanted pizza and corn because who doesn't want that? But I'll also let them know a little later than I should have. So they, they're serving what they had. That's gonna be spaghetti, and visitor meals will be $5. We hope to see everyone there. September 30th will be our September Assembly, and our fall cookout will be on Halloween. If you wanna write that down, why not make it a day? So, thank you.
I think any grandparent that is unable to come is always welcome to come and volunteer for cafeteria duty at any time. Anytime.
Merle, you can go anytime you want to go. Grandparent, you could, you could.
I could, but my grandchildren, my grandchildren don't live here.
Come on up, Ms. Rail.
I've done cafeteria duty for 30 years.
I know you have.
I've been in the cafeteria.
So just like Clinton Elementary has a PLC path set for the year, we also have set a path for the year for our teacher trainings once a week, where we, last year, we used our academic conversations with Accountable Talk, and we touched on success criteria a little bit. So this year, we're going to continue to talk a little bit more about success criteria and continue to use those academic conversations with an ultimate goal of students speaking about their academic achievements and growth in daily practice and with any of their academic goals, just to be able to have that conversation with their teachers and be able to express what they do and do not understand in a meaningful way. We are going to be starting our fundraiser with schoolstore.com. We've used that for the last several years. We had about $3,000 in either donations or where the parents will purchase items online, and the school gets a little bit of money from that, from the schoolstore.com if they've signed up for it. So that was, that's been a very successful fundraiser for the last several years for us. We had our RTI fall meeting with all of our teachers and intervention staff to set intervention enrichment groups last week, or two weeks ago. And then last week, we had our leadership team meeting, and we set, our staff survey had said that they wanted to be, have more leadership roles. And I thought that was a fantastic opportunity for us to kind of do that a little bit more this year. So we have staff members that are committee leads as part of the leadership team, and they are very excitedly sending out surveys and getting feedback from other staff about some different things that they want to do for this year. We will have our health screenings tomorrow, and 3rd grade Farm Day is on the 15th, sponsored by Farm Bureau. And I do want to say I have a thank you to a library donor of $1,000, anonymous donor. So I want to say thank you to the anonymous donor at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bones Steele?
Well, the good part about going last is they covered a whole lot of things that were on my list. So we have also been working in PLCs this first month of school, continuing our work that we've been doing with NIET. And our focus last year was on success criteria and student ownership. And we are continuing that, but we're also working this year to use formative data and to really reflect on what practices we're using in the classroom are effective and what we maybe need to make changes to to make our students be as successful as possible. We began RTI groups on the 29th, and those are going well. We had lots of room changes, so lots of kids had to learn where all our RTI spots were located, but we're getting there. So Fall Pictures were on the 31st, and we had health screenings this week on Tuesday. We have an upcoming leadership team meeting on September 13th. And then our first PTCC meeting for the year will be on September 29th, and we are going to discuss our fundraisers for the year and our events coming up this fall. And then we have a September Assembly on September 30th at 8 o'clock. And we're excited to have the school board tomorrow at South Clinton Elementary for your school board retreat. So we look forward to having you and you seeing the new additions to our building.
Thank you, Ms. Bones Steele.
All right.
That concludes our reports.
All right. The annual conference in November, which we discussed for our delegate nomination there, is coming up. Please make a note that that will be the 11th through the 13th in Nashville. And then, Kim, have you heard from everybody on attendance?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're good there. That concludes reports and information. We'll move on to our director's report.
It's gonna be short and sweet tonight since we're gonna be together tomorrow. But I did want to give a couple of public, public ESER updates. Just to kind of let you know, as you know, there's been three pockets of money with ESER, the federal funds, to help us try to deal with the COVID-19 situation. ESER 1.0 funds have been expended. We had to have those expended by this summer. We did a great job of meeting that deadline, and so all of those funds have been taken care of, and that grant has been closed out. But we still do have ESER 2.0 and ESER 3.0. We will have ESER 2.0 funds for another year. We will need to have those expended by next year. And what we are currently, Lori Collins has worked on that grant, and it is in the process of being approved at this time. But we will be using the remaining funds for additional technology to replace outdated devices and equipment. We're gonna continue our NIET partnership. That is taking us in a great direction that is helping us with student ownership and building capacity across the district. That, we use that pot of money also to pay for our Capturing Kids Hearts training, the two-day training, social and emotional training that we did with all staff members before school started, and then continuing to purchase materials and supplies for our RTI and all core interventions to help address learning loss. So all of that grant will close out next summer. But then we have the ESER 3.0 funds for two more years. And we are using 100% of our ESER 3.0 funds on additional salaries. If you recall, we are using a lot of the salaries in the ESER 3.0 funds, and then we used our GP funds to help pay for, or to pay for South Clinton Elementary School. So we have hired additional certified teaching, certified teachers to teach interventions with ESER 3 funds, additional teaching assistants, additional guidance counselors, and that is also paying for Maureen, our system-wide math coach. So as part of the ESER agreement, in order for us to receive these funds, we have to do a six-month update in two areas. One is on our Health and Safety Plan, which you all approved in consent agenda. And the other one is how we intend to spend our remaining funds. And so you all were required to approve those, which you have done. Those are currently on our website as well, both in English and in Spanish. Lori Irwin has placed those on there for us this week. However, we are always seeking input from parents. If they have any input on the way that we are spending ESER 2.0 or 3.0 funds, or if they have input regarding our Health and Safety Plan, they are always welcome to email those comments and input to me, or they're welcome to call me at central office as well. But we will have to update those again in January and then again next year. So it's on every six-month cycle. As far as our Health and Safety Plan goes, at this point, we really aren't doing a whole lot of mitigation efforts with regards to COVID, other than encouraging parents to keep sick children at home. But we are not mandating quarantines or isolation, and we have ceased the distance learning option. So we are basically conducting school as, as normal. And we also have those plans that we can go back and pivot at any time that we need to, if the data deems necessary. But our hope is, is that we can return back to normal. Then on another happy note, field trips have returned. I've been able to, like, sign some permission for field trip forms, and that has made my heart extremely happy. But we've had to cancel the annual Farm Bureau Farm Day, I think, for the past two years. And so we are excited that is back, so that will happen on the 15th. And then just wanted to give you a brief update about our 3rd grade parent retention meeting that we held this Tuesday. We really did have a fairly good showing, considering that lots of kids are involved in lots of things in the evenings, and parents have a hard time finding a free moment to attend something. But we had a good number of parents that came. And what the purpose of this meeting was is just to explain what the 3rd grade retention law says and what, what requirements have to happen in order to go on to 4th grade. So what we did was we held this information meeting, and then the principals have been working diligently to look at three different data sources. So it's very difficult to try to predict what kids are gonna fall under this retention law because they've never taken a TCAT before. So this will be the first time that they've ever taken a TCAT test. They have taken a 2nd grade end-of-the-year state test, but that is not a TCAT test. So it's a different set of, it's a different type of test. It's graded, it's not, it's not associated with TCAT. So, but we're gonna look at three different data sources. We are gonna look at that 2nd grade end-of-the-year assessment. We are gonna look at EasyCBM, which is our universal screener that we give three times a year that looks at early foundational reading skills. a year that looks at early foundational reading skills. And then we're gonna look at our iReady benchmark. And if a child falls at risk in any of those three, one, two, or three of those things, we are sending that report home to parents and telling them in what areas or which, with which, with which benchmark, we are saying that they are considered at risk and they are now on our watch list. We feel like it's important enough that they actually do receive this, so we're actually gonna put it in the mail so it goes straight to the parents' homes instead of relying on the children to take it home. This is not meant to be a fear factor in any way with parents. We made it very, very clear, Dr. Jordan and I both made it very clear to parents that our intent is to send everyone to fourth grade. There are pathways that you can take and we will work diligently with parents to ensure that we provide those pathways if they will make the commitment to sending their kids and allowing their kids to participate in these pathways. But we went over what those pathways were to parents. And so if you'll flip to the next page, just in case you are asked, we'll talk a little bit more about this tomorrow, but I did want to say it publicly for parents who may be watching and are not, were not able to attend. So in your TCAP assessment, you have four different categories of performance. There is a below basic, there is an approaching, there is a meets expectations, and there is an exceeds expectations. The state is defining on grade level that you are reading on grade level if you are in the meets expectations or you are in the exceeds expectations category. If you are in the below basic or the approaching, they are considering you to be below grade level and you would fall under this retention law. So if you are approaching, which is the second from the lowest, keep in mind that this group ranges from about the 26th percentile in some grade levels up to the 55th percentile. So that is a wide, wide range of percentages there. They have to do one or the other. They either have to attend our four-week summer school or they have to agree to attend in tutoring, or attend tutoring the entire fourth grade year in an all-core tutoring, which means a one-to-three ratio. So they have to pick either or. You're gonna run into a problem once we get to below expectations, though with the all-year tutoring with all-core. So then if you are below expectations, then you have to do both. You have to do the summer school and agree to tutoring the entire fourth year in an all-core tutoring, which is a one-to-three ratio. When you attend summer school, it has to be a 90% attendance rate. So up to this point, we haven't been able to have any teeth behind if parents have been able to send their kids or not. And frankly, we wanted them to get all the help they could get, so the parent said, I'm only gonna be able to come for a week. We're like, well, five days is better than nothing. Bring them when you can come. But to meet the requirements of this law, they would have to be there 90% of the time. Now with your all-core tutoring, it takes a one-to-three ratio. So there's only so many students, staff-wise, that we can serve in fourth grade because we have a 45-minute timeframe, which is our intervention time to do this. And so if below basic kids have to have it, they're gonna have to get the first slots for our all-core tutoring. So this is where we may run into a situation where we struggle with a pathway for approaching with the all-core tutoring because we may just not have the staff to pull it off and we're gonna have to really, really encourage the parents to take advantage of the, of the summer school. We will try to work with any parent, obviously, that could not attend summer school, but we're gonna encourage as many approaching students to take that route just because of the low ratio mandated and, and the staff members that we have. Now, there will be another option where if a parent wanted to retest to see if they could do the meets and exceeds, the State Department is supposed to be working on that. We have very, very limited information on that at this time. If the child has been previously retained, if the child has been in ESL or ESL services for two years or less, or has a disability that directly impacts reading, then they would not fall under this law. Under the disability and the suspected disability, a lot of questions have been raised across the state, of which the department has yet to answer for us. For instance, what does suspected disability mean? We have a group of kids that fall under characteristics of dyslexia. Is that, is that gonna qualify as a suspected disability and therefore they will not be held to this law? We don't know the answers to that yet. There is supposed to be an FAQ being released by the department, but we have not seen that yet. So once again, this law has been in place for a year and a half, but yet we don't have the details of exactly how it's gonna play out for certain groups of our students. We've expressed concern about that to the Department of Ed. This is getting a lot of traction right now. We've known that this has been coming for a year and a half, but it's kinda like you don't worry about your house burning down until you see the flame. Well, the flame is here and so now a lot of districts and a lot of parents are starting to express a lot of concerns about this. Legislators are hearing lots and lots of information from parents, from what I'm being told. We did make available representatives' contact information at our meeting and I encourage parents, if you love it, let your legislators know. If you don't love it, let your legislators know. Because I have all ideas that in January, this is gonna be a topic of discussion and our hope is, is that we see some tweaks made with it, but once again, that's out of our hands. Then the last thing is, is the parent does have the right to appeal the retention decision, but that appeal, the parent has to initiate and it has to, it goes to the Department of Ed. We are not the deciding factor on the appeal. So at that point, the parent is writing down information about the child and then someone in Nashville that does not know the child, does not know the family, does not see the complete picture will be making the determination if that appeal is granted or not. And so the two things that we, just to recall, to refresh our memory, that we went down and fought for in General Assembly last spring was two things. We're not opposed to children getting extra help. We want children to get extra help. We want children to be reading on grade level and we know the importance. But let us look at multiple data sources. You know, a TCAP test is only as good as they are on one day and is only as good as they can take a multiple choice test. And we've got other data points that we could look at to create a portfolio for a child on reading and make a determination based on multiple data points. We lost that, they said no. And then the second thing was, let the appeal be at the district level. Let there be a retention appeal team that involves the principal, the teacher, the guidance counselor, and let's look at the whole child and let's look at the data and let that be decisions with parent input to, to help us decide what's the best thing for the child. And that was also denied. So we'll just continue to watch this, but I told parents it may change. We don't have all the answers, but I want to be as transparent with parents right now to where hopefully there are no parents surprised come spring. So the meeting went very, very well. Parents are clearly concerned. They are worried, but we just keep preaching that our goal in Clinton City Schools is to not retain students. We're just gonna have to partner together and work through the pathways that are mandated through the law. So more to come, more to come on that. And that is it. Any questions? And if not so, that concludes my report.
I mean, looking at this, I know by having our low-ratio tutors, I know we, we're using our ESER 3.0 funds.
Yes.
To get additional interventionists and the teaching assistants. That money runs out in 2024.
Correct.
I assume that the state is going to continue this program or mandate that we continue this program past 2024.
I don't think they will because I don't think it's gonna work.
I don't think it's gonna work. If it, if it does, if, if they do require it after 2024, we're gonna have a huge financial loss at that time. Is the state anticipating making up for the loss where we're using ESER 2?
Their answer to that is gonna be in the TISA formula. Every child that needs tutoring in fourth grade is gonna get $500. That's their answer to that.
That probably won't be enough to-
But you have to know the scheduling and principals know this best, but you have to know the scheduling of an elementary school. You don't wanna take them out of core instruction for reading or math or science and social studies for their intervention because then they're missing on-grade level material and they're just gonna get further behind. So you have to do it during that 45-minute intervention so that that's the time that that whole grade level's not going on with new material. So then they don't come back into the classroom after receiving intervention and then they're further behind. Well, that 45-minute intervention time rotates throughout the day. So kindergarten may be 8:00 to 8:45 and first grade may be 8:45 to 9:15. And during that grade level's intervention time, you're putting all hands on deck on that grade level to try to offer as many small groups as possible. But you gotta keep in mind, we're still gonna have tier-two, tier-three kids that have to get intervention by the federal response intervention law. And the funding that we have right now for our all-core tutors is only six kids per grade level because we've got two all-core TAs, but they're rotating between the grade levels throughout the day and they can only see a one-to-three ratio. So you look at Clinton Elementary and if every single fourth grade kid that's approaching or below basic has to receive 45 minutes of tutoring a day in a group of one to three, where are those people gonna come from? Because I can't rotate those people all day long because they've gotta get it during that 45 minutes of time. So that's where, and if you don't understand the scheduling of elementary, you're like, well, you've got all day to get that done. Well, if I do it at any other time during the day, they're not getting on-grade level reading instruction or on-grade level math instruction. And so it's gonna present quite the, quite the challenge. And we did have a parent say, but if it's in the law, are you not required to provide it at Clinton City Schools? And the answer to that is yes, but I fear that we may be forced to look at an approaching parent and say, I don't have spots for all-core. So it's summer school because I don't have the staff, you know, to provide the one-to-three. So just lots of unanswered questions that hadn't really been thought through that we hope now that parents and other stakeholders are beginning to get involved, that legislators might open up their ears and listen a little more.
Yeah. And I mean, with that, we're gonna have a huge financial hit.
Yeah.
In 2024.
Correct.
If all of our ESER funds are used.
Correct.
And we don't have any other revenue coming in.
Correct.
So that was my question, is, is the state going to give us enough money in order to have that one-to-three ratio or are they gonna give us very little? We're, we need to-
Your $500 per kid certainly are not gonna, is not gonna pay for a teaching assistant and their benefits.
So we, we probably need to be thinking ahead in the future.
And if they would just make the slight tweak of, with the approaching, it has to be tutoring, but not necessarily all-core, and we could put you in a group of five or six kids and provide tutoring. You know, even a simple tweak like that would make it, would make it more doable. So those are the things that we hope they, they open up their ears and listen.
Okay. All right.
Is this something that is meant to be temporary, just to get the kids caught up?
No.
From COVID or is it a permanent?
This is a permanent.
Forever, even for kids who eventually will have had no-
Yes. And you also keep in mind, the first year that we're implementing it is with the, these are the kids that were impacted most by our school closures. And we're gonna start this law with them knowing that they were impacted the most, knowing that it takes years to recover. So. And I really do think the legislature's intent, I, I really do think their heart's in the right place and that they wanted, they just want the kids to get extra help. And I think they put the retention in there to add a little bit of teeth to encourage the parents to, to take advantage of it, but they don't realize there are so many factors that go into committing to four weeks of summer school. And so the conversation hopefully will continue.
Especially when some kids don't even live here in the summer.
Correct. Correct.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.